All right, you guys ready? All right, we call the meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education to order on March 10, 2025 at 5:30. Please join our board team as we recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank everybody for coming out on this gorgeous day. So, over the last few weeks, we've been in contact with KDE regarding our district facility or local planning committee. And luckily, we had an opportunity because of some information they provided and they revised some of their guidance. We took this opportunity to call this special meeting so that we could address those concerns and make sure that we were doing everything that we needed to adhere to those regulations. So tonight, that's why we're here, to discuss the members of the LPC, the community members mainly, that did not qualify for the committee, community members. And mainly, it was around the location in which they live. They need to reside within the Nelson County School District. So I've provided the board with all of the names.
So I do have the updated guidance of KD here just as a part of the email that they share with us. I think a couple of things. One, we're fortunate that KD has been really generous in the process of engaging. But I think one of the nice things is the department also, they owned that they had given us guidance that provided us with the opportunity to move ahead with residents that live within the county, but also within the city in this case, and/or non-resident teachers. And if you notice the email, you know, they did, I think really it was a very nice message. They spoke to the diligence of the board members in the process. I think they had watched some of the videos and engaged in our conversations in that manner. They also were back and forth with Mr. Martin throughout the process and in the last week with me. So in short, it's interesting because KD basically didn't say that board had to change any of the recommendations. They just encouraged you to change the recommendations, which is just one of those unique things. So ultimately, a local board of education could act outside of this recommendation. It's not typical, but it does occur. With that said, the last line there I've highlighted, "Consider directing the board to select a resident member from the group of nominations for the community leader." That is revised guidance. And then the last part, I think is important. "We greatly appreciate the diligence you, the district, and your board have made in compiling the initial roster in a compliant and transparent manner, and we offer our commitment to the district for moving ahead in the process as quickly as possible." Like, you know, as you know, KD's come down and given us a couple of trainings over the past year to further our progress with the local planning committee. It's no secret, we've had, you know, ongoing conversations about the facility plan for almost four years now. So tonight is another step in that direction where we can continue to make decisions that support the future of our schools and our students and communities.
So on the February 18 meeting, we had made, or I had made a recommendation for Tina Long and David Cook. Are those still considerations for you guys on those two? Is there any discussion on those? Okay.
On those, yes.
So we would need to replace Ms. Eisen since she lives within the Varchtown City School limits. Any discussion?
I appreciate the clarity from the Kentucky Department of Education and the ongoing efforts to ensure that each step that we made, that we sought clarification from them and specifically asked questions regarding what the process is and are we doing that correctly. And my understanding is they had a consultant who was answering those questions and that when the facility, oh, sorry, when the LPC membership was presented, that their legal team had a slightly different interpretation. And again, it was not, it was more of a recommended change on our part. And I'm thankful that our board team and our board members were in agreement that we want everything to be done in accordance with the facility planning manual, with the statutes, and with full transparency.
Luckily, I think that's the, that to me is the blessing in disguise. We're catching it before we're in the middle of this process. So I think that we do have to share some gratitude for that.
I think too, the reg says you want a diverse representation of members from around the county. With that, I think we know we have students that live in the county and the city. We also have students, teachers that live in the county and the city. We also have schools in the city. So it's just, you know, not every county is impacted with the city and county district. And KD's initial interpretation was for the community member living within the county was being a resident. This is all about how you define what district means.
So there's three, it looks like eligible people on this list for community to replace. We need one more community member.
Correct.
And, you know, I'll just speak to one. It's Roy LaGaspe, Jeff Dickerson, and Donna Blinko. And Mr. Dickerson was a former board member. He was a board member when the previous LPC presented the recommendation. That's one, I feel like that's, I think he was too involved in the initial process. So I feel like that's a conflict. And I know Tracy, in emails you had sent to us, you initially felt that way as well.
I did, but, you know, again, at this point, KDE didn't feel that there was a conflict with that. They also didn't feel a conflict with Ms. Milburn as being a board member as well. So, you know, again, this is up to the board to make that decision and to have that discussion around these three members. I think if you really look at the representation of the district as a whole, as the county, we have representation for Bloomfield currently with three members, I think, on there currently. So I think that would make a tough argument for Mr. LaGaspe. So again, it comes down to the Mr. Dickerson and Ms. Blinko. One of the members that was originally on our district, our community leader list, sent me a text today saying she was no longer interested in being on that committee. So that's why we removed that one.
But he's a former, former school board member?
So he was a representative in David's district. He did not run on his last, on the last term, run around.
Gotcha. And we don't have much representation from New Haven, right, at this time?
Just, we have a teacher representative currently.
Gotcha.
Me personally, and I, you know, I said this at the last meeting, but I believe Donna Blinko was the strongest candidate anyway in terms of investment in our schools, not just in money, but time. I think she has certainly proven that she's invested in students. And once it's best for our district, I think she's served in a variety of areas within district leadership, even when her children were students and now, you know, it's later in life. So I think that would be my choice of this list. I think she would be an excellent representative. And I think she's capable of being open-minded and listening and making intelligent decisions, so.
Now, again, I don't know everybody here. So Donna, her role, or the reason why we were skeptical to begin with is because she might have future financial involvement?
No, no.
No, she won't have any financial.
She's a family member of Ms. Deaton's.
Okay.
She is my, my children's grandmother.
Okay.
Okay. But she's served in a variety of roles. She was on, gosh, I'm at a loss for words now, but she served on.
Oh, the Up Foundation.
The Up Foundation. She served on that board. She served in a variety of capacities within the district. And that wasn't a conflict. So I don't believe this would be either.
Yeah, I think Ms. Blinko does bring uniqueness. She's, she is very knowledgeable of buildings and what things will cost and what. And I don't think she's, doesn't mind speaking her opinion. That's what I like about her. She has been proven that she will support us. And she's been a very big, very big supporter of Nelson County Schools. That'd be my pick also, Ms. Blinko.
How long was Mr. Dickerson on the board?
He served one term.
Yeah, I was gonna say four years and he re.
What years was that, was that roughly?
Yes.
So it'd be five and a half years.
Five and a half years.
Yeah. I think it really just comes down to, to what extent do you want to look at the diversity and representation? You know, how do you qualify conflicts of interest?
It sounds good that we have multiple people. I mean, that's.
Right. I think, again, I go back to, I do think there's a conflict of interest with Ms. Blinko. And, and again, I think if we're looking at how we're representing a district and all of the people in our district, I mean, I would think, you know, Mr. Norman, you would appreciate someone from New Haven being there to speak up for your, your community. We don't have a lot of representation right now from the west side of the county.
Well, both of them are Farm District One, Ms. Blinko and Mr. Dickerson. I just feel like Ms. Blinko would bring a very unique perspective where she's not from that. That's my opinion. From the two, I would pick Ms. Blinko.
As far as either candidate and their respective employment, I don't know about their employment situations or ownership. But one question that I continually ask throughout this process is an additional layer of conflict of interest is are they involved with or owners of any type of business that does or has done business with our board or potentially would, because that's.
And I check that, and to my understanding, Music Construction doesn't do school or, now, they do employ, you know, they're participating in the work, it's learning. I mean, obviously, they have a construction company with five hundred employees.
But there's nothing we purchase from musics?
No.
I don't think there's.
A financial.
I don't think there's an immediate substantive issue that I would have concern about from that. Again, I would just say, you know, if it was my mother-in-law, would I have him on there? Probably not. Me personally, but I'm not making the vote. I'm also not married, so I don't have a mother-in-law.
We previously also had addressed removing anyone who had donated to our campaigns. So I do want to think about that as well, from that sense of.
I don't think that would be an issue either.
If anybody knows Ms. Blinko, she doesn't, she doesn't report to anyone. She's her own person. And that's what I like about her. I think she's very open-minded, but also very, she'll let you know what she thinks. And that's what I like about Ms. Blinko. But I would like to make a motion for Ms., to bring the vote for Ms. Blinko.
So the motion, you'd have to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Ms.
You'd have to make a motion for all three of them.
Oh, so we need them, so, oh, yeah, for all three. So for Tina Long, David Cook, and so you would need to make a motion for all three that we'd have on there.
I would like to make a motion for all three.
I would second that motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? So at this point, we need to, to look at this list and we need to have a really good conversation here. Because again, my concern with, with Mr. LaGaspe is we have representation for Bloomfield. And I don't think we can add an additional person. It's not representing the district as a whole. These are supposed to be stakeholders that represent the entire district.
Well, I mean, I think as a community member, that is what they're doing is, I mean, I think the idea is that they would represent the whole district. So regardless of what their address is, I don't think there's a presumption that they come in, you know, with that. So I don't see that as an issue.
What's your thought on that, Mr. Crawford? To have such a heavy set of people from one portion of the county versus the rest of the county?
So I just want to applaud the board for the diligence, the process you guys have been going through. This has been a four-week, five-week conversation. It's a tough conversation. You know, you had some recommendations along the way. We've had to take five people off the list because of issues we didn't even know existed.
Yeah.
So I do want to acknowledge that from a standpoint of the reg, it says diverse representation across the county. So, but that's, that's, I don't vote on the community members. I'm just acknowledging that's what the reg says.
Well, I'm leaning toward Mr. Dickerson because, one, I think it's interesting that he's a former school board member. I think that's important. I mean, that's obviously, I would think a good thing and the New Haven thing. That sounds like we would need that representation. Because New Haven's always been talked about the one that's needed to help the most. So I feel like the more minds we have to split up the.
I think it's conflict interest being a former board member, being on there, in my opinion.
And such a, not just a board member, but a board member in such a divisive, you know.
Well, I think we could argue that with.
I want to break someone in that's not on one side or the other.
I think you could argue that, though, also with Ms. Milburn. That, that there's going to be people at the table that have different perspectives. Our goal is to, well, we're, we're assuming that everyone's coming to the table in good faith. That everyone's coming to the table to have good, honest discussion, ask questions that, that are relevant to their community and to the students of Nelson County Schools. And we are hoping that everyone is coming with that in mind and that it's not about coming with a preset recommendation. Again, the reason why I chose Mr. Dickerson as not being on the original recommendation is because I'm trying to overcompensate for the legal troubles that we've been in since '21. And I'm trying to overthink this process. Otherwise, Mr. Dickerson would have been part of my original recommendation because of his history in New Haven and his ability to think outside the box and him also understanding the processes. Part of the questions that we ask or that I ask during this was, what is the local planning committee to you? What do you, what are the responsibilities that it has? He's able to come to the table with those things. But because of individuals in our community that continue to question the integrity of this process, I wanted to take it a step further, and that is why I did not put his name in the hat. And I think that, that, again, I've not heard any feedback. I had one person question Ms. Milburn, but I've not heard any feedback from the community or KDE or this board in regards to Ms. Milburn being on this LPC. So if one.
But Tracy, we didn't pick Ms. Milburn. She was voted on by the parents of the school. Now, had she come before us, then potentially, we could have probably argued, you know, the same, the same thing. She was a board member and we already have a board member. You know, we don't need multiple former board members. But we didn't pick, she was chosen as a parent, so.
I think she was just a board member about three months ago. Was it a divisive time?
It was, but we, but we were not in the, in the seat in order to, we couldn't, she was, she was voted on by the parents. We didn't have a say in that, so.
Right. Which again, is why I was trying to be very cautious of who I put on the, who I made the recommendations for. So I think we can, we can look at this list and we can make, you know, if you guys want to look at it for a few more minutes, if you all want, whatever you all want to do. But I think we're going to have to make a decision on, on the representatives that we have in front of us.
I would make a motion to nominate Roy LaGaspe, along with Tina Long and Dave Cook, for the LPC community positions on the board.
I'm second to that.
All in favor? All opposed? No?
No.
So we're at a standstill, people, if we're gonna have to make a decision here.
We'll just nominate who you're gonna nominate and we can vote. It is what it is. There's only three people on the list, so we've gone through two of them.
I just think there's too much conflict with Mr. Dickerson. I do. I think there's too much friendships and bonds there, and I think it's gonna look really bad on us.
Pressure.
It's my opinion. It's gonna lay down on the table, what it is. I know Ms., I know Ms. Blinko doesn't, doesn't answer no one. She's her own person. No matter if she's Ms. Amanda's, Deaton's, mother-in-law, ex-mother-in-law or not, she's not gonna answer to Amanda. I'm telling you right now. I know she's her own person. She's not scared of no one.
And again.
She can't be bought.
I think we're, we're assuming everyone's coming to the table in good faith.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's inappropriate to, to.
She's a very spoiled heart district.
I, I would just say, you know, the, with the 10 people on here, we can assume that they're all coming with good intentions. So I just, I just want to encourage us to, to not cast somebody in a certain light. It's totally, totally unhealthy. I think we've been very supportive of all the members on the, of these 10 people.
I think we were lucky to have 10 people sign up to be part of this LPC.
Oh, yeah, you gotta think each and every one of them. This is not an easy task here, guys. This is, it's gonna catch me.
We've scrutinized this process more than anybody in the state of Kentucky because we do have a group of people that are looking with a magnifying glass at every single thing, and they're trying to target any specific conflicts of interest. And over the past two weeks, I said, three weeks ago, we expect to get something every week. We've got that, right? We've gotten the first one. We got the second one. We'll get the third one probably tomorrow.
There are groups, plural.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. There is absolutely people in our community that are going to take us to task and hold us accountable. And to be clear, I welcome that. That is why we are doing this right now, is because we know we are who, we are holding ourselves accountable in this right now. And that's why I think it is a good representation that this board is doing, that we are responding to an issue that KDE brought and their reversal, and we are responding to that. So I thank each of you for being willing to come here and make sure that we are holding.
exist.
What is the standard length of time by which KDE approves such processes?
Well, looking at the spreadsheet, I think it's probably a 24 to 48-hour checkbox. However, you know, it could take them a little longer, but we don't expect it to take much longer. All the other requirements are already met, so. I think in general, KDE recognizes that we've, we're, you know, a few weeks behind where we originally scheduled. They came in January 21st, so they're aware that we were moving in the process. They're also aware, because we talked to them last week about this out-of-area, out-of非 resident exemptions for quite some time. Ultimately, they're scrutinizing our process at a level that's uncommon because, you know, the reg is easy to kind of maneuver within and pick, and cherry pick parts of it. And that's something that, as you noticed in their email, they said that it gave them an opportunity to go back and revisit their regulation. So if we've done anything else in Nelson County, we've achieved that.
And I highly encourage that too, when I spoke to them on the phone.
I'm grateful for the scrutiny. Also, I want to express my gratitude to all 10 people who did apply. I do think any of these 10 would be wonderful. It's a very difficult decision. I do believe in having geographic representation, and I feel that my district is sufficiently represented. I'm grateful for that.
All right, so we will need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Uh.
Boys volleyball, I'm still.